That are not on the agenda. Okay, alright, we're gonna go ahead and move on. We're gonna skip a few things and we're gonna move on to Ms. Nelda. Nelda has submitted her retirement to Escare County Treasurer and we're going to accept that retirement. Nelda?
Yeah.
First of all, I want to say thank you for thirty-five years of service to Escare County. Not many people will give that much time to their community.
Really enjoyed it. I've learned a lot, met a lot of people, but I just, I'm ready.
I understand.
I'm ready to retire.
Understand that, I understand. With that, y'all want to consider her retirement?
My question is, is that Nelda's retirement? Understanding that.
All in favor? Alright, we're gonna consider posting the job vacancy for Escare County Treasurer on the timeline for this receipt of application there. Alright, so it's not just cut and dry, alright? There are some, some things we do need to consider, so if we're accepting her resignation today on the nineteenth, two weeks is what I'm recommending as posting time. And we'll write on the board and in the paper. We have a meeting on the second. I would think that we would start wanting, want to start doing interviews in that time period for the next two weeks to the, what was the sixteenth? Alright, so Nelda's years, it would be effective June thirtieth.
Seven months after the crisis.
And to save you from having to have any more responsibility, we would want to have somebody in place July first.
That's the way I understand from talking to the tax retirement commissioners.
Okay, so.
To have somebody in place.
Okay, so if we set a meeting and appoint somebody on the sixteenth, that would give two weeks notice for whoever got the position. And there are some things that come along with that that Mr. Hartman's gonna tell us about.
I'll be happy to answer your question, Judge, but just a brief overview. If you effective today's retirement is the end of June, June thirtieth, the Commissioners will have to make an appointment. That appointment is suitable next general election in this case, November. Because it happens at least seventy-five days prior to that November election. There will be spots open on the ballot in November. Those spots will be filled by the Republican Executive Committee and the Democratic Executive Committee should they choose. So your appointment, whomever it is, will basically be effective from July first through the time we canvass the ballots, ballots in November. At that time, whomever the Republican Party and the Democratic Party nominate will be placed on the ballot and then whoever wins that election by the people will be the new Treasurer. So if you have any questions about the timing, I'll be happy to try and answer it. This appointment's gonna be relatively temporary. For November.
November, November.
Your applications. Application resume. Um. Good. On the sixteenth. So that's a second motion. Second, all in favor? Thank you.
To appoint on the sixteenth? Okay.
Alright, Nelda, we're gonna have to have your Treasurer report. Let me go ahead and give events, go ahead and hear, give our report for twenty twenty application bonds. Thank you for having us.
Judge, Commissioners, thank y'all for having me. For the record, I'm Vince B. O., specialized public finance. If y'all recall, a few months ago, y'all gave us the directive, go ahead and look at trying to refinance some of the county's existing debt obligations. We have since done that, we've been in the marketplace and got an interest rate secured on refinancing the county's existing debt. I wanted to go over the results of what we were able to achieve by doing that and hopefully answer any questions the court may have about the transaction. So, in part of the process, we had to apply to Standard and Force Corporation and get the county's rating confirmed. It was confirmed as an A-plus rating. So S and P did come back and confirm the existing county's credit rating of A-plus, so I was very happy to see that. We did go out for bid on the refunding bonds. We put together refunding bond structure, we put in the marketplace soliciting bids from prospective bidders. It was not a negotiated transaction, it was a competitive bid transaction. So we put it out in the marketplace and we solicited bids from prospective bidders to buy the refunding bonds. We received four bids. The low bid came in at an interest rate of one point nine one percent. Now, if you recall, the obligations that we refinanced were the Series twenty thirteen bonds and those interest rates were outstanding at three percent to three point three seven five percent. So effectively, we went down from that three percent down to a one point nine percent, which is the reduction in the interest rate we were able to achieve on that. What that did is it result, resulted in a net savings to the county of one million seventy thousand dollars over the life of the obligations or about seventy-five thousand dollars per year, each year over the life. And again, these are net savings to the county by doing this, just a reduction of that interest rate by, by being able to achieve that. This is the highest amount of savings that we've seen in following this transaction. If y'all recall, we looked at it on October twenty-third and we had about three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars in savings. We looked at it again on December third and had a little over five hundred thousand. So when we actually pulled the trigger on this on April thirtieth, that's when we were able to achieve the one million seventy thousand dollar savings by doing this. This transaction is scheduled to close here in a few days. It'll all be done via wire transfer. Judge, if you or the Commissioners have any questions about this, I'd be more than happy to try to answer. Sir?
Don't let it slip through the cracks.
Yes, sir. Worked out well. That in conjunction with getting the A-plus rating confirmed by S and P, given the financial pressures that we've been through the last few years. I was very pleased to see that on top of a million plus dollar savings to the county, so it worked out well.
That's a good thing, seventy-five thousand, that's real money.
Yes, sir.
I wasn't on a dime situation to do something this.
Alright, thank y'all very much.
Uh, let's go back to, well, let's, uh, let's go ahead and discuss the big one, the Fourth of July celebration. We'll go ahead and get that done, but alright, so we don't actually put on the Fourth of July celebration, the Chamber does. Thank y'all for coming today. What are, what are you hearing? What are, what are your thoughts? I'm getting questions all the time, are we having Fourth of July celebration and we just provide the facilities?
Yes, yes you do. We, we're just kinda at the mercy of, if y'all ready for the county's property. We're talking, we usually bring in about five thousand people. I would think it's up to, I don't know if we can have that many people in one area and social distancing will not work while we're there. Usually where our food trucks are, we have a volleyball tournament, I mean, we're pretty congested. So we don't mind putting it on, we would love it, we haven't had a event yet this year, anybody. Even Pops has canceled or Petty Coats has canceled. We have not had one event since all of this virus has started. Can we do it? Yes, it may not be as big as what we had wanted because we've had, we're on a, we're a standstill. And, and yes, and we will also be on a time crunch. We have vendors waiting in the, in the back burner and then we have people that cannot even come because of where they're at. They can't travel.
Sure.
So it's a community event. We would love to have it, if we cannot have it, we're just gonna make our next year bigger and better. And we're hoping to make our white buffalo days, we're just gonna, you know, that's not till October, so we're hoping. By then, we can still have an event downtown and where we're gonna bring in, we've been talking to a smaller carnival that comes during Easter and they're looking at maybe come in and maybe get a few of the car shows and put everything down on the square that we didn't get to have up until then. Because I know people are needing it. The car crews, the crews and I proved that, people were everywhere. And again, social distancing, it was hard, I felt the same way, you wanted to love everybody, we love everybody and we miss everybody and it just made my heart so full and we had that, we had a hundred and sixty cars lineup. We were able to help that evening with that. And, but that's our town, that's who West Texas is, that's who Snyder is, we want to hug and touch and and so we're just asking either, I, I don't know what the government, I mean, the governor is saying about that at this time. If he's even opened up events for us to have something this big.
Right now, nothing, he has said nothing about big events. The biggest thing he's done, and I've got, I printed this off his rodeos, talks about rodeos and he said that they can do twenty-five percent at this time, well, effective May twenty-second, do rodeos, but that's the only really event that he's talked about.
Yeah.
Talked about youth clubs, talked about sports, bowling alleys and things like that, bars and whatnot, but hasn't said anything about big events, so I don't, I don't know where we're gonna be at that time. But I, I can't see anything wrong with saying that facilities are available for that. So, and then whatever y'all decide that that will be.
And, and we appreciate that.
That's just me, now, he's gonna take the rest of the.
I just, I know Midland, they've already canceled Fourth of July.
Middle has?
Yes, and that's a pretty big, that's big.
Yeah, and I'm seeing events canceled all the way through July and into August, so.
We are too. We just don't want to let our town down.
Sure.
I mean, that's where we're at. We, we don't want to let everybody down, but we don't want to cause harm to our community.
Right.
Having all these people come from out of town.
Exactly, now, in, in these orders, this is something that, that I was looking at. When he put this out there, he specifically named, named four or five counties that cannot do any of these things. And, you know, opening up for rodeos and bars and all of that, youth sports, because their numbers were so high. That would be a cautionary tale in my opinion. So we just need to think about that.
Well, you're not, you're not talking even about the fireworks, right?
I'm, I'm not, I'm just saying the facilities, that making the facilities available and of course, the Chamber wouldn't make the decision on the fireworks.
Well, the people that had got a hold of me and talked to me and asked me about, was I, you know, I couldn't speak for everybody.
Sure.
Didn't even want to. I, they, they're ready to get on the line.
Sure, I understand that.
And, you know, this is not just for little kids, it's for old men.
I agree.
You know, we had to get off the bench.
Understand.
You can't win on the dang thing. You gotta put your boots on, get out there and let's, let's get this behind us. And the only way you can get us behind it is take a forward step. And, that's mine.
Great, I, I agree with you, I do. I'm just throwing out there that he specifically mentioned those, just as a caution.
Yeah.
I want to go forward, I want to open up more, he said twenty-five percent on a lot of these places. He didn't mention those that, like us, are allowed to go to fifty percent, so I'm following up on whether he's gonna allow them, those new places open up to fifty percent. Because that's what I want, I want us to move forward, but we've got to do, we've got to be careful as we do.
Well, I, I agree, but I think we've taken your suggestions all along on this deal and I think it's time for them to say, well, they've been done once, they've been asked or.
And it's not just my suggestion.
No, I'm, I'm not gonna run it all on you yet. But, you know, it, it's just, they're young, it's, it's, you know, I don't like to swing. Circus, but out there, I would go get on a ride, but there's other people that need some punching or something. Let's get on a better live, it's gonna be summer's over here for long. So I, I think we oughta mess the grass up for him one more time.
That's the thing, because nobody gives the American people any credit for everything they bring in because they've always been able to do the best thing. I want to use the other since she's retired. If you don't want to go to Fourth of July, she's not gonna go. If you feel free, you're not gonna go.
That is true.
If I feel free, I'm not gonna go. So, you know, we do. I'm like motion a little round that, we do our part.
That's all, that's all I can offer right there. I get the same calls and people are saying the same thing, they're saying, if, if you're afraid of it, and I did, people that are afraid, and they're not gonna go. Those that are not afraid and that want to get out and want to socialize, they're, they're not afraid, they're, they're making a decision to take a chance. And I, I think it's time to, to take that chance. And see what, see what we can do. There, even the Lieutenant Governor said early on, he said, I'm seventy-seven years old, I'm predisposed to this more than anybody, if I die though. He's thrown America to be the country it has been and not wake up to a new America for my parents' children. So I'm ready.
And we're saying full blown, we can do everything that we've done in the past, right?
That would be y'all's decision, we, we're, we're just allowing y'all to have the facilities.
Awesome, you know you have workers there that help us, so that's another thing, you know, we can't, we all do it together.
Yeah, we'll be there.
Yeah, and the fire department, everybody helps us. We're just four people, but.
Yep, well, that, alright, so we're allowing, my, my thought is, we're allowing the facilities to, to be, like, all of them. We're allowing the facilities to be used. We, we want that to go forward.
Okay.
But it's, you also need to be mindful of what the state says. Is, that was my cautionary tale, be mindful of what the state says, if the state says no.
Then we're stopped.
Well, now, I'm, I'm gonna say, y'all decide what you're gonna do if the state says no.
If they say no, then we can get sued.
Sure. Exactly.
Don't let that happen, I don't feel like going to jail.
Right, yeah.
So we can just, I mean, they put that salon lady in.
But they got her out really quick.
Yeah, so is that, I guess, okay with the carnival too, and then that's on Lions Club?
Yes, ma'am. Is it the Lions Club to make that?
Well, I'll run it through my board and, and let them be the deciding factor because we will be responsible at that time.
Okay, yeah, and you came by to see me the other day, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I apologize for not getting back to you, I intended to, but I knew this was coming up as well and was probably not prepared for this, so.
Okay.
Hopefully this answers your question as far as the.
What I'd like to say is that the carnival, the heart of Texas carnival, who comes each year and they've been, they came to the Snyder Carnival or to the fourth, five, a long time.
Absolutely.
They've been out of work since all of this takes place too, so they're hurting themselves.
Sure.
And any chance of them getting started, I mean, it's late in their season already. And any chance of them getting started, generate some money so they can carry through next year, even stay in business, so. We'll cooperate with the Chamber too, we, we want to be cautious of the people coming in.
Sure.
Make sure everybody's safe, but once again, everybody's ready to get out and do something.
Sure, absolutely, what are they, are they hearing anything? Have you spoken prior to Texas to see what they're hearing as far as guidance?
I have not, no, I have not spoken about personal stuff like that or anything like that, just know that they're ready to get out, get, get going, get prepared for it, so.
Okay, alright, well, thank you. Alright, so we've got that taken care of. Alright, let's see your Treasurer report, Treasurer for Nelda, just gonna bounce around today.
That's fine, okay, we ended the first quarter of twenty twenty with a total cash balance of fifteen million, one hundred and thirty-two thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars and fifty-six cents of all accounts. Interest earned for the quarter was seventy-seven thousand, six hundred and seventy-one dollars and fifteen cents with a gain of five thousand, three hundred and seven dollars and twenty cents compared to the fourth quarter. The interest earned year to date, we lost at, and I don't even know if I wrote that down, but it was a loss by eighteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars and twenty-two cents. So in our year to date, of course, is at seventy-seven thousand, being we're in the first quarter. So we lost eighteen thousand for my year at this time, does that make sense?
Compared to last year.
Yes, and of course, we all know that the Fed slash year lowered the rate like three percent and with this virus, it's just gone even lower. Our investment interest rates are as follows. Texas class, we were earning, are we earning through the first quarter, one point four seven zero zero percent. Texpool was one point zero zero three four percent. Our FICA account is point eight four seven one percent. And I, we always compare it to the ninety-day T bill, which I looked at that and Googled and kept Googling, but I kept coming up with point eleven percent. I mean, I don't know if I hit someplace wrong or what, but I looked three, four times thinking, oh man, that can't be right.
Sure.
But that's what I was saying. Anyway, if you have questions, I'll try to answer it, if not, I submit it for your approval.
I'll make a motion, that's it, Treasury, forty percent, we're. All in favor? Thank you, Nelda.
Thank you.
Court, consider accepting donations for this. You just mentioned, senior senator. I put the agenda together, so it is not in order. All in favor? By the way, Cynthia is back, she's going to, how about you for all of us? Discuss and consider bids on taxiing property cars across property in the cities. It's one I missed, it's back here packet. It's the same thing that I'm gonna give for all of them. Eight hundred and one dollars for this property is what they paid for that property or what the highest bid was. Uh, let's discuss reopening the senior center. Amy, how are you?
I'm fine.
What do you think?
I think our seniors are ready.
I think you're right.
They are, they're ready, the wives are ready for the husbands to be coming. The kids are ready for mom to be coming back down there and busy and, yeah.
Okay, and you've got a plan to social distance.
We can socially, I don't know how social distancing will work because they're all gonna have in mind that they're on.
Absolutely.
You know, but we can get some tables out of the dining room, into the domino room, proceeding and we can bring those some chairs so there's not eight people at every table and staff can serve instead of everybody getting up in line, staff can take their plates so they're not standing in a line, you know, breathing on top of one another and so we'll do everything that we can to make everybody as safe as possible, there's hand sanitizers on the wall.
Sure. And it's gonna be the same thing, people that are afraid are not.
Exactly, and you know, some will bring masks along and some, you know, they, they figured they've lived this long and they've survived things way worse than this and they're ready to go.
Absolutely. And then they close, we are three open, the seniors just have their hundred teams. All in favor? Alright. And we are first quarter, two weeks into opening Texas, so I think we're doing well. Court, discuss and consider opening play to individuals who reside outside of Escare County, of course, what do you think?
Well, in light of the fact that other golf courses, Andrews, Gaines County, all of those, even Lubbock, which has the most.
Sure.
Are reopening and I would like to see us take all the restrictions off, including to, to a golf cart. I have ten golf carts and they're wearing them out, doing one at a time. And it's, if they ride to the golf course together.
Yeah.
They work together, they're in close contact all the time. We haven't had one person wear a mask and the carts have been sanitized from top to bottom. I mean, we sanitize even the floorboard of the cart so that if anybody drops anything, picks it up, it's, the board's been sanitized. And I realize they're stomping all over it, so what can I say, but anyway, but I would like to see that completely opened.
Okay, on that aspect, we still have to follow the other guidelines on that, I think there are some specific, so we'll have to look at that. As far as, you can sit down and look at what the guidelines are on that, so.
On that, and, and as far as the pro shop being open, sometimes they can't create more than ten in there, if that's still a guideline, and that won't be a problem. But I have been extremely blessed and surprised that from April the second, until, oh, it's when we, when, from April the second until May the fifteenth, the golf course brought in twelve thousand dollars, over twelve thousand dollars, and that was with all the restrictions.
Sure.
So, everybody wants to be outside and it's a good outlet, it's, and virtually germ-free, as you can say, but we'll continue to, I feel like we need to continue to sterilize the carts.
Sure.
And that's not a problem at all, but we've had, we've had new members that have come in, in, within the county. We've had some that have come wanting to be members out of the county and so it's just been really a good thing.
Okay. Thank you. And I, I did see some guidelines, I just, I, I didn't open it and see exactly what those guidelines were, so I would say as long as we follow.
Hope not following the governor's guideline.
Yes.
Okay.
Alright, can I allow another comment?
Yeah.
Well, they opened it up, as far as I know, they, they opened it up completely.
You're talking about those folks coming in?
Yes, sir.
I, I'm for that.
Okay, yeah.
I don't turn a nickel or what. I know I'm turning the neck or what.
Alright, so that's a motion to the, it was a second. All in favor? Court to discuss and consider approval of request to get capital credit from Texas comptroller's public accounts. Yep, I've got it down in my office.
Well, every year, it's a, the formality the court needs to do to request the capital credits from the Texas comptroller's account. Sorry, Texas comptroller's office. Uh, normally, it's anywhere from three to five thousand dollars. Kind of places like the capital credits from the country co-op and stuff like that. As far as Texas comptroller, we request it and they release it down to us.
Did they have an amount on that?
It does not have it.
I didn't think it did, so.
Yeah, sometimes it could be more, sometimes less. But it's un, unmentioned revenue, so.
In precinct projects scheduling.
There was some, uh, discussion about whether or not that scrub seal would maintain the roads without a, another seal of some sort over those. I talked to Carrie Hart with Texas Department this morning. She said that they're following the guidelines. Which, Alexander, he came down and was with them during that seal. She said they absolutely will be sealing over those scrub seals because they are not permanent. The timber is, we're gonna put that out there. That doesn't need to be done.
Does it make the roads last longer?
You, you will not fill in those cracks. If you don't, it would just pop up through that chip seal. And that's something you do not want because it is even more expensive to try to maintain that road. And in fact, it's going to deteriorate even further over time. So, yeah, it is a very good process. It just makes it more expensive. So, there goes your budget. Well, they're gonna, they're waiting a little while because they're not, they're not ready. And, and of course, you're just, you're just patching in certain spots. You're not doing the entire road on a scrub seal. You're just doing alligator cracking, large cracking where there's an area that has large cracks that can't be filled up with a chip seal. And so, it's spotted, you know, like our county road, we've got maybe triple places, uh, out of a hundred and fifty miles that we're going, that we would need to scrub seal. And it, and it's relatively cheap in comparison to losing the road. For trying to, trying to go in there and fill that alligator cracking up and then complete, you know, fill the chip seal and, and all, you know, put it all back in the time and the piece and everything to do. So, it is cheap and it is very effective. And it's not that expensive, but it is an additional expense. That's what we're trying to get at. It is.
Okay, uh, I nearly missed it, but let's consider approval of precinct broaden bridge reports.
And judge this, this is something that, uh, I mean, everybody got theirs in. Texas Department will be the ultimate decision maker as to whether or not this is what they are looking for. Some counties have received these back and asked to add on to whatever they sent in. And so, I think the way we've done it, all of us have done it this time, I think they're gonna be very happy with it. I sent mine, uh, through email down to our attorneys, Alson Bass. Uh, they were very pleased. They think it will go through easily. So, we'll find out.
Absolutely. And this is required for that grant?
Yes.
Do you have any live out of transfers or budget limits?
No.
Alright, then let's do the council.
Council table at three hundred and sixty-five thousand, nine hundred and six forty-eight.
That's good. Not complaining. That's true. But no, it's normally. I believe that covers everything today. I'm, I'm voting without saying anything. Thank you, everybody, for coming in. Appreciate y'all being here.
I want you to pass that around. Everybody's gonna sign that. I see it now. Alright, thank you. I'm sorry, did what?
Did you steal your strong screen pen?
He noticed that. Yes. And he would be pleased with me using my green pen.
Yeah, but don't we still need to go by one to go?
I'll push you. I was reading on that because literally it's a issue. Sure. What you got?